Johnson.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McColsky. Polica.
Here.
Leaks May.
Here.
Um, Madam Mayor, I would move that we excuse Councilmember McColsky's absence.
Support.
Johnson.
Yes.
Polica.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Leaks May.
First item is approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Polica.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Leaks May.
It looks like we're going to presentations. Item 4A, Michigan Class, who is?
Our presenter is running a little late. 她在做 construction, so might I suggest we just swap the two presentations and we can introduce her when she arrives.
Item 4B, recognition of, is it Sheon, Sheon Designs, a Main Street Connected grant recipient?
Vershaun Young says that creativity and entrepreneurialism are in her blood, coming from a family of artists and designers. Her grandfather was an inventor who holds a patent for a component that is still used in modern day scooters. Vershaun first started making jewelry as a hobby almost 30 years ago and turned her love for geology, natural gems, and stunning jewelry into a thriving business that helps others sparkle and shine. She creates each piece with intention and joy and crafting designs that are bold yet elegant and timeless yet unique. Vershaun was one of the original vendors in the rust belt market and successfully grew to expand out onto her own. For the last six years, Sheon Designs has been located in 195 West Nine Mile in the Ferndale Arts Building. Vershaun there is a valuable liaison for her fellow downtown businesses. And in addition to her own creations, her storefront also features eclectic pieces from other women and minority business owners, including scarves, hats, clothing, accessories, and custom stemware, and a variety of other items that make great gifts or treat yourself indulgences. Outside of Ferndale, you can find Sheon Designs at art and maker shows throughout southeast Michigan and the Midwest. While building a following of customers both locally and beyond, Vershaun realized that a missing element for her business was a website. Beyond social media, marketing like Facebook and Instagram, she recognized how an online purchasing platform with photos of her pieces could grow her reach. This would make it easier for customs to purchase ready-made items and also request custom pieces, like a design that was commissioned for dancer Debbie Allen. In November of 2024, she applied to the Main Street Connected Grant, made possible by Michigan State University Federal Credit Union, MSU FCU, and downtown Ferndale wholeheartedly endorsed her proposal for that. In January, she was awarded $984 to be matched with her own investment in the business towards the design and launch of her website. By further partnering with Oakland Thrive, Vershaun maximized this opportunity with more than $1,000 in additional services for professional design and consultation. She's now in the final stages of her website launch, but you can see a preview of some of her pieces through www.Sheondesigns.com. And unfortunately, Vershaun could not be here tonight to accept this recognition. But on her behalf and on behalf of the Ferndale DDA, I'd like to thank Main Street Oakland County and MSU FCU for this investment in local business. Programs like this are made possible through our good standing as a select level Main Street community. And moreover, if other businesses in downtown Ferndale are interested, applications for the next round are open right now until June 1st. Eligible businesses can receive up to $2,500 in dollar-for-dollar match funding towards technology and digitally-based supports. More information about the Main Street Connected Grant can be found online or by contacting us at the Ferndale DDA. And lastly, we will be recognizing Vershaun in person this Thursday at our DDA board meeting. And more importantly, this weekend, she will be celebrating Sheon Designs anniversary Saturday and Sunday at the store. That's 195 West Nine Mile Road. So please, if you have the opportunity, extend congratulations and show support for this amazing local business and an inspiring entrepreneur.
Hi, I'm excited to be here. My name is Ian Cox, and I'm a Market Manager at MSU. Federal Credit Union, covering southeast Michigan's community impact efforts. So I helped work with Main Street Oakland County to create this grant program because one of the biggest barriers for small businesses are the costs of technology. And so having the funding and resources to create an online presence as well as to have the tools needed to compete in the digital space, from everything from payments to web design, e-commerce support, et cetera, is just really important. We're also thrilled to support Main Street districts across Oakland County with this grant program. MSU FCU is committed to communities where we have locations and the communities surrounding. And part of our belief is that communities that thrive with vibrant downtowns and Main Street districts make, or help to bring residents, make it a place where people want to live and work and visit, hopefully patronize the businesses there. So we're excited that the next grant cycle round has started and will be open for three weeks, and we'll have a second grant cycle later this year. Personally, as someone, I live in Madison Heights. I come to downtown Ferndale all the time, so it's exciting to me to have a recipient in Ferndale. And I can't wait to visit Sheon Designs and check out what she has to offer. So thank you so much for having me. I will just give the plug, if you would like to learn more about MSU FCU, you can go to our website at msufc.org. By being a member, you help to fund programs like this in your community. Our closest branch to here is in Berkeley at the corner of 11 Mile and Coolidge, so we invite you to consider joining and becoming a part of our movement. Thank you.
Real quick, my name is Anika Norris. I am your liaison to Main Street Oakland County as well as Ferndale resident. So it's always exciting to get to come in front of you and present checks to our Main Street grant recipients and/or just working with the Ferndale DDA Main Street Program. Sorry. We're super thrilled to work with Ian. We invited him to one of our events and he was like, I would like to do a grant program. I think, I think it's such a mouthful. Michigan State Federal Credit Union would like to step up and do this and try to figure out an area that made the most sense. And coming in with technologies and things like websites and point of sales services and things like that are really important to small businesses and really help them get up, you know, either take that next step or even just start out. So we're super excited to work with them and always great to work with the Ferndale Main Street Program. I was wondering if you might mind if we got a picture with you all? I just wanted to add one last thing. Thank you so much for your support as counsel to the Main Street Program and the DDA. They are truly what make this community that we live in so special that people want to come here and live. I mean, there's amazing things throughout downtown, but that Main Street Program can really focus on the downtown to bring more residents in and give us that walkable great space that we love so much, so thank you.
So I still do not have my presenter for 7A, but I would be happy to provide some context for this item. It is something that we've alluded to in past conversations, particularly during our budget workshop, which is reapproaching the way that the city imagines its investment strategy. One of the tools that I've had success with in the past is using Michigan Class, which is a consortium of other public agencies, cities, districts, things of that nature. It is compliant with Michigan's investment pool regulations. It's an acceptable investment mechanism for the city under existing policies. And it's a way for us to pursue more liquidity to our investment strategy. Currently, the city heavily invests in commercial paper products that can have anywhere from a few months to a few years in length in terms of holding them. What we'd like to do is as those particular items expire, move them into Michigan Class, which offers us very competitive rates on our return with near instant liquidity for all of our uses. This would also increase the total dollar amount that we can put into the pool simply because we don't have to retain large quantities in our checking account, so to speak, as we go about our business on a month-to-month basis. We would determine what an appropriate amount would be to maintain in non-interest-bearing accounts and for all other funds, put them in the higher interest-bearing accounts. I believe Michigan Class right now is around 4.4, which is consistent with, pretty consistent with like the 10-year Treasury bond. And it tends to follow that same trajectory over time. So we did include some materials in the packet related to the Michigan Class Program specifically, as well as a copy of the city's current investment policy. Certainly, if our guest from Michigan Class does show up, we can invite her to provide more information about their consortium itself. But at this time, if council has any questions, myself or our finance director are happy to answer.
Any questions? I'm just happy that we're finally getting this moving.
Yeah. So the process would be at the next, this was meant to be an introduction. Oh, Kristen is here. This is meant to be an introduction just to what Michigan Class is. And from there, the next step at our next council meeting, we would have council adopt the, or take the action to adopt the resolution for us to formally join. Kristen, sorry to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to introduce yourself and just say a couple of words about Michigan Class at the podium. I've already given the background, so don't feel like you have to give the whole spiel again.
Hello, thank you for having me. Sorry for my grand entrance tardy. Construction is a real thing in Michigan. I came from the west side today, so I appreciate your time. And you want to give, you want me to give an overview?
Just the general overview of what Michigan Class is. I already gave the context for why the city is pursuing this strategy.
Sure, sure. So in a big picture way, Michigan Class is a way that all public agencies in Michigan can come together in a pool, local government investment pool, to be able to achieve economies of scale, some efficiencies in investing together, all in one portfolio. Our team oversees a portfolio for all Michigan public agencies under the legislations appropriate for Michigan public agencies, primarily Public Act 20. Liquid in a way that is accessible for you on a daily basis, should you so choose, or you're able to leave your investments there for as long as you so choose. So really what ends up happening is we establish an online portal for you where you have certain authorized users, you have a number of sub-accounts, as many as you'd like, and you're able to invest in the pool when it's convenient for the city, as appropriate for the city, adding sub-accounts as you need them self-serve within the portal to keep reporting separate for those projects or budgets. We really just maintain liquidity for you. And behind the scenes, we manage a portfolio of 200-plus investments at any given time that is primarily liquid, 60 days and under, a prime fund. So all of those holdings are flipping behind the scenes where you don't have to worry about those maturities. We're doing that for you. Anything specific you want me to cover beyond that?
No, I think that's it.
Yeah. Or questions?
Excited to do it.
Through the chair, I have a couple of questions. So what type of securities are you investing in?
Good question. So Public Act 20 is the legislation for public agencies in Michigan. And it allows you, it details out about 10 different types of holdings that you are allowed to invest in as a public agency. Our portfolio team utilizes all of those avenues as appropriate for the market. So certain percentages are better in an upturn market, certain percentages are better in a hold or a downturning market. So we use all of those items under Public Act 20.
Okay, and can you give me some examples? Are we looking at like blue chip stocks? Are you looking at bonds? Are, you know, what vehicles are you?
Sure, sure, yeah, certainly. No, I mean, it's really pretty detailed out in Public Act 20. We're going to be investing in bank products, US Treasuries, repurchase agreements, commercial paper, those sorts of items that, as appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do you, do you allow as part of your, your operations, loaning assets to, loaning monies to people? Or organizations or other cities? Like if a city were to come to you and say, well, we need to borrow, you know, a half a million dollars, do you approve loans? Do you do any of that? Are you strictly investing in securities?
Yeah, so I think what you're getting at, so Michigan Class is not a depository. So we're not in, so we don't replace your bank products. We do utilize some bank products within the pool because of course there's some good ones that in a portfolio make sense for public agencies. But no, we're not in the business of loaning, although we do, we do house quite a bit of bond proceeds for public agencies within the state of Michigan. It's really, that's really been a big additional line of cash inflow for the pool in the last few years, just because in Michigan, our timelines, it's really hard to budget to a timeline. There's too many uncontrollables, and so Michigan Class has been a good option for bond proceeds. So if you're going out for a bond, those proceeds, we do have those. But as far as lending the money back out, no. You would have access to your own funds anytime you'd like them, but no, unfortunately, that's not a lane that we walk within.
Would, my questions, the reason I'm asking my questions is because I'm trying to ask questions that I think residents may have.
Sure.
Sure. So would you, would you kind of define yourself then more like a fiduciary for government entities?
So, no. So Michigan Class, the way it's set up, Michigan Class is for public agencies by public agencies. So there's a Board of Trustees made up of peers, financial directors, treasurers from across the state of all entity types. There's 13 of them. And the documentation is really just, it's an inter-local government agreement.
Okay.
Right? And then that Board of Trustees takes our team's recommendations and says yea or nay to those recommendations and kind of guides us as to what they feel public agencies would like us to do as far as administering the pool. Right? And so we handle everything from administration, portfolio, credit research, client services. We handle all of it behind the scenes, but for the inter-local government agreement, that is, when you become a participant, so it's you opt in to participate in the pool. You don't opt in to a certain amount of dollars. You can keep it at zero, you can use it when you'd like. But it's for, once you opt in, it's for you, by you, by the public agencies. Inter-local government agreement is the way that it's managed.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
I appreciate it.
I have probably a slightly technical question, but since you noted that, you know, you guys have received a lot of bond proceed, investments of bond proceeds, are you all doing the monitoring for things like arbitrage and rebate needs? Or is that still something that the city's financial advisor would do separately as a result?
Yeah, so, I mean, we do have some information on arbitrage, but we certainly aren't the experts in that lane. So we would encourage you to utilize any, you know, any of those resources as well as far as looking at that. But we can certainly provide the reports and the information to you that you can use for those uses, yes.
So with the internal service funds that would be, that would apply, does that mean the department, department accounts? Like fire, police, would they be wrapped up in this?
So that's really our discretion, what sort of sub-funds we would want to have. And a lot of times it's just driven, again, by whether we want to keep it in longer term or shorter term. Some communities will set up short-term funds to put all of their tax proceeds in before they go out to the other districts. So really, I mean, this could be the type of thing you turn around in a few weeks or is a long-term holding. And I will note that Michigan Class does have two different investment options for shorter versus longer-term holdings with a slightly better historical rate of return if you're keeping it in longer term.
You'll be able to, there's two separate considerations with regards to all of the different funds. If the, if the department has its own tax ID, you know, we have a lot of DDA's, fire authorities, water authorities, road commissions, conservation districts. If some of these fall within the city, but they have their own tax ID, you have the ability then to have a separate account where you can put separate usernames. If, for all the counts that, say, these are the folks that would be on an account, say this was the list of authorized users for the city. If there was a different mix of people that you wanted to be able to authorize or read reports for another department, you would set up a separate account. And each individual user would be able to, when they log in, they would see all of the accounts that they have access to. So each individual person would. So you'll have, you'll have the ability, once we, once we get into it and we'll ask some questions and see how you'd like it set up. But any public agency, any public dollars have the ability to invest in Michigan Class. So it would just be a matter of who's on the account, individuals. Is that helpful?
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Action for that tonight, so. We will now go to call to audience. And I open call to audience at 7:23, where anyone can come up to the podium, state your name and address. You have three minutes to discuss anything on or off the agenda. Dennis.
Hi, Dennis Augustin, 1550 Spencer. I spent 40 minutes here at the railroad crossing, between 25 after 5 to about 10 after 5, or 25 after 4 till 10 after 5. And I somehow managed to weasel my way onto a side street and all legal left-hand turns to get out of there. But this is one time that I'm going to have something to say about the way the police handled this. And that is, is I don't know if this guy got a ticket, but if he did, the police officer should have gave the ticket to the railroad for tying up the street for, I was 40 minutes and I left. And when I got down to 8 Mile, I could still see the train back straight up Hilton. But this has been an ongoing problem and it's ridiculous. It's just like I said before. I think we need to start suing the railroad in the event of loss of life, and I hope nobody ever does lose your life, you know? Because I've been there already once last year, okay? And I'm glad to be here, and I really am. But I do not, you know, like I said, I've always liked my police department. They're very effective. I like the way they handle things. But to today, I saw something that really, if that guy got a ticket, he shouldn't never have gotten one. The railroad should have got it. But our government's been really slow in taking care of this business of the railroads all across the continental United States, Alaska, and Hawaii. Okay? And when I turned my television on and I seen them downriver, people talking about how the railroads tied up their intersections, their highways and all that. This is ridiculous, totally ridiculous. And then, and like I said, I'm aggravated because of what happened today and what I saw today. And then, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be. Nobody should get a ticket if there was one, and I don't know. I'm just saying theoretically. But they shouldn't get one. The railroad should get it. When it sits there on the track, and it used to be, there was a police department on the railroad head at one time. And I had that gal get in my face when I just asked one question, how long is it going to be before they're going to clear the tracks out? And she got real mean and pissed off and was just totally ornery and in my face. When I called the railroad about it, all the railroad said back then, this is back a while, the guy laughed and he says, well, I live in Holly. So what? Okay? So what? You need to do something, the people need to step up because the government ain't doing nothing.
Thanks, Dennis. Call to audience is still open? Anyone to speak on anything on or off the agenda?
This is, yeah, Dave Kotrell from 1610 Bowfield. And I was primarily speaking to the people watching on Zoom who I'd love to come to council and answer questions. And one thing that's stopped them, or a lot of people don't know, is that, okay, you can check it out, but is what I've learned, know, come to know, is that if you're parking over here in the city parking lot on city council night, it's you as a resident, come be to speak to your city council. Do not have to pay the fees, so you don't have to pay $3 to talk to your city council people. So I'm really encouraging people just to come, participate in their government. That's it, thank you.
I will close call to audience at 7:28. And we will move on to the consent agenda. Item 7A, approval of the April 28, 2025 meeting minutes. 7B, proclamation to observe May 18 through the 24th, 2025 as National Public Works Week. 7C, resolution to observe Thursday, May 15th, 2025 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and proclaim the week of May 11th, 2025 as National Police Week. 7D, resolution to observe May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month. 7E, resolution to display the Rainbow Progress Pride Flags. 7F, resolution to approve qualified licensee for Ferndale Social District. 7G, approval of tractor elevator testing by Otis Elevator Company in the amount of $8,557.50. 7H, approval of HVAC preventative maintenance services with Rolls Mechanical in the amount of $7,845. 7I, approval of fire suppression maintenance by Elite Fire Safety in the amount of $9,179.72. 7J, approval to sell surplus 2010 Ford Econoline van to Hazel Park School District in the amount of $500. 7K, modern, approval of modem replacement from Ferguson in the amount of $4,379.56. 7K, modern, approval of modem replacement from Ferguson in the amount of $4,379.56. 7L, approval of replacement playground parts from Sinclair Recreation LLC in the amount of $4,833.2. 7M, approval of the Ferndale Fiscal Year Ending 25 Third Quarter Budget Amendment. 7N, approval of bills and payrolls as submitted by the Finance Director and subject to review by the Finance, by the Council Finance Committee.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Court?
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes. And we had a couple of proclamations that were just approved and we can take that opportunity to read those now.
Sure. So on January 11, 2021, City Council approved a formal exterior flag policy for the city, which states that in addition to the United States flag, State of Michigan flag and the City of Ferndale flag, other flags may be displayed on a temporary basis outside City of Ferndale buildings and on City of Ferndale property upon the issuance of a resolution adopted by council. And the additional flags authorized by council resolution to be displayed on a temporary basis shall be considered government speech only and shall not be deemed a limited public forum. Now there be, therefore be it resolved that the City of Ferndale City Council determines, one, the City of Ferndale shall display the Progress Rainbow Flag effective June 1, 2025 through June 30, 2025, outside the City of Ferndale Hall, City of Ferndale City Hall Building in recognition of Gay Pride Month. Two, the City of Ferndale shall display the Rainbow Pride Flag effective June 1, 2025 through June 30, 2025, at Gary Park's Hero Memorial Garden in recognition of Gay Pride Month. Three, this additional flag authorized by council resolution on a temporary basis is considered government speech only and shall not be deemed to create a limited public forum or other forum to the public to utilize city property. If any section or position, or portion of this resolution is deemed to be invalid, unlawful or unconstitutional, it shall be, it shall not be held to impair the validity, force or effect of any other section or part of this resolution. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon passage. I also wanted to make mention that because the median in Woodward is not city property as actually the state of Michigan, the rainbow flag will be flown as it has on the median just north of Eight Mile, along with the state of Michigan and American flag for the month of June.
So member Johnson.
I have a resolution recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental health includes our emotional, psychological and social well being. It affects how we think, feel and act. It also affects how we handle stress, relate to others and make choices. And mental health is important for our individual well being and vitality as well as that of our families, community and businesses. And nearly one in five American adults will have a diagnosable mental health condition in any given year and more than 42.5 million US adults live with anxiety disorder, the most common mental health condition in America. And May 1 through May 31 of 2025 is recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental health, American, MHA's 2025 theme is Turn Awareness Into Action, which celebrates the progress we've made in recognizing the importance of mental health and provide challenges to understanding, to turn, provide challenges to turn understanding into meaningful steps toward change. The City of Ferndale joins our local and national partners in promoting this year's Turn Awareness Into Action campaign. Mental health management ensures that individuals can focus on their abilities to work, live, work, learn and fully participate and contribute to our society while promoting diversity, inclusion and acceptance. The City of Ferndale is committed to inspiring hope, empowering people and strengthening our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Ferndale hereby recognizes May 25th, May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month. The City of Ferndale calls upon our citizens, fellow government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, faith based organizations and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness to promote recovery and a higher quality of life.
Councilmember Kelly.
I have a proclamation declaring May 18 through the 24th as National Public Works Week. Each year, the American Public Works Association declares the third week of May to be National Public Works Week. This year's theme, People, Purpose, Presence, highlights how public work professionals contribute to and enhance the quality of life in all the communities they proudly serve. These infrastructure, facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And and it's in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in Ferndale to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. This year, 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, Vietnam. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ferndale City Council proclaims May 18 through the 21st, 24th, 2025 as National Public Works Week in the City of Ferndale. We encourage citizens to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and advancing quality of life for all.
And now the resolution that I'm reading is the Resolution Recognizing National Police Week. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. It is vital that all citizens know and understand the responsibilities, hazards and sacrifices of their law enforcement officers and that all members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. The Ferndale City Council calls upon the citizens of Ferndale and all patriotic civil, civic and educational partners to observe Thursday, May 15, 2025 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, honoring the law enforcement officers who have through their courageous deeds made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their communities or have become disabled in the line of duty. Therefore, it is proclaimed that the week of May 11, 2025 is National Police Week and we, the city council and the City of Ferndale urge all citizens to join in the observance. Thank you. All right, and it looks like we have one item on the regular agenda for tonight. Item 8A, the resolution to accept the Eagle Community Energy Management Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Just a quick presentation on this. This is some exciting news that we just received in April. So as we all know, our facilities are a little old, which is cool if you're into history like I am. DPW was built in 1923. Calvin Coolidge was president then. The building we're in now, 1964, President Johnson at the time, Fire Station 2, 1952. Harry Truman, the last president who did not have a college degree, by the way. But anyway, old buildings are expensive to operate. This is mainly, you know, their energy usage is significantly worse than newer buildings. So what have we done? We've, in the past, in 2021, we did a facility condition assessment, which came with energy audits. When we did this, you know, we created our Facilities Capital Improvement Plan based on this information and it definitely confirmed our need to become more energy efficient and more cost effective. I mean, that's the bottom line. Energy wasted are dollars wasted. So in June 2024, partnering with Energy Sciences, who we have been working with in the past, we applied for a grant through the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, Eagle. This grant would be able to cover the cost of ASHRAE Level 2 audits on two municipal buildings. We've selected Fire Station 1 and the DPW main facility. ASHRAE is actually the professional association, the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration and Air Conditioning Engineers. This is the group that actually certifies these types of audits. And what is an ASHRAE Level 2 audit? It goes beyond that initial energy audit. It looks into operations and will actually help us put together a plan to not only improve the, the building itself, but to improve operations to make it more energy efficient. The great thing about this grant was that it was going to require no local match, 100% funded is what the, the project is through the grant. We went after a total of $100,000. Last month, we were informed that yes, we did in fact receive this grant. So what's our next steps? Upon council approval, hopefully tonight, we're going to begin working with Energy Sciences. We did, you know, when we approved going after the grant in June, we approved the contract with them to be our, our contractor to perform the work. They're going to provide us with a written assessment of our current practices. They're going to perform the two ASHRAE Level 2 reports and they're going to develop an energy efficiency action plan, which will give us some short term steps for the first couple of months. It's going to go for a two year period. The project timeline is 12 months. So at the end of 12 months, we'll have all these deliverables that we can bring back to you and start planning for in our capital improvement plan. So with that, it's pretty simple. We are looking for a resolution to accept the grant and let us get moving on the work. So I'm happy to answer whatever questions you might have.
Matt asks, how did, what is the evolution of this grant? How do we come, come to learn of it?
This came through our partnership with Energy Sciences. We are working with them on actually multi jurisdictional grant, the, through the Department of Energy. Hopefully we continue working on that. We're still waiting for that grant to actually come to fruition. But that is a project we're working on with Energy Sciences through, with Madison Heights and the Lambier School Districts as well. So we got word of the, of this project through that.
And are there any additional, is there any other pursuits of grants through the Energy Sciences?
As they come up, we'll always, we're always looking for grant funds to do these types of projects, especially these, this is low hanging fruit. How can we, you know, how can we improve our cost effectiveness as, as an operation, improve our energy efficiency? And when there's zero local match required, it's kind of a grand slam for us.
That's, well, that's a little bit of a rarity, so I'm kind of excited about that.
Yeah.
I think someone else had some questions to call to council.
No questions. Great job.
Yeah. This is awesome.
There's a suggested action.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the resolution to accept the Community Energy Management Grant from the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, Eagle, and to amend line items 101-172-540 and 101-172-818 to reflect the revenue and expenditure increases as submitted by the Assistant City Manager.
Court?
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes. Well now, we're already at the point where it's called, I mean, called to council and I turn it over to the City Manager for Department Head Updates.
Clerk's Department.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to share a big thanks to all the folks who helped us administer our election last Tuesday, specifically our polling location, election inspectors, our receiving board, absentee voter counting board, and then all of our election workers at the early voting site as well. Big thanks to all of them. Also a lot of our departments here in, in the City of Ferndale, you know, Chief Emmy, Sergeant Blanchard, Officer Roth, Riley in Communications, James in the Assistant City Managers Office, Justin in the Human Resources, and then like 10 DPW employees who help us set up and break down all of our, our election sites. So just a big thank you to everybody who helped out with that.
Communications slash special events.
All right. I have a few things, so bear with me. The first one is Ferndale Learn is continuing on. We are now officially in the second half of the program. Since our last meeting, the students met with Public Works, Logan or Zero Waste Manager, IT and the DDA. This week they will meet with Human Resources and Community and Economic Development here in council chambers. And then next week, we will go to Garbutt Park for a picnic in the park with Parks and Recreation. Sessions are every Thursday from now until June 5, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. And you can still sign up for the remaining sessions at bit.ly/ferndallern2025 or bit.ly/ferndallern2025. The Ferndale Recycling Drop Off Station is this Saturday from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the City Hall Parking Lot. This includes items like paper, metal, electronics, hazardous waste and much more. But there is a full list of acceptable items on the city's website and social media page, pages. And the 107th Memorial Day Parade is on Monday, May 26th from, at 10:00 AM, meeting on Livernoy and West Maplehurst. Visit ferndalememorial.org for more information. Also, City Hall is closed that day accompanied by a trash and recycling delay. And just stepping on some department's toes here, but there is a fireworks reminder that fireworks are only allowed on the Saturday and Sunday preceding Memorial Day until 11:45 PM. And last, but most definitely not least, the Emirate State of the City is tomorrow at 7:00 PM at Affirmations, which is located at 290 West Nine Mile Road. Everyone, everyone's encouraged to attend. And then we also will be streaming, live streaming the speech on the city's Facebook in case you can't miss it and you want to watch virtually. So questions about anything I just mentioned can be found on ferndalemi.gov or you can just email information@ferndalemi.gov and I will direct you to the right place. Thank you so much.
Parks?
Good evening, good evening. First of all, we will have a day of play event that will take place at Martin Road Park on Saturday, May 24th from 11:00 to 2:00 PM. This will be an event that will help us kick off the splash pad season as well as cut the ribbon on some of our amenities that have just been installed out there, including the pickleball courts and the basketball court. The day will include basketball competitions, pickleball lessons, splash pad activities, sack races, equipment lending, food and a live DJ. It is completely free for everybody who wishes to attend and we are also encouraging people that attend to bring out their own sports equipment to show us how they would like to play in our parks. No registration is required, just show up and have a great time. Also, we have the Gary Park Skate Jam, which I've been talking about for several meetings now. It'll take place on Saturday, June 7th from 11:00 to 3:00 PM at Gary Park. There will be various competitions that take place throughout the course of the event that will include skateboard competitions, scooter, inline skating and BMX. Those competitions range in different leagues or in different categories for all ages. And the event will also include bounce houses, games, activities, equipment giveaways, food trucks and a live DJ. The event itself is free to attend for all families. The only costs that are incurred as part of that is if you want to participate in the competition, there's a nominal, I believe, $10 fee to do so. And there's also the food trucks that you would need to pay for. And then lastly, we have our pajama movie party, which is coming up on Thursday, June 12th. It'll be from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Detroit Curling Club. It will include inflatable games that will begin at 6:00 PM. And then the movie will start at 7:00 PM. The movie that we're going to be showing this time around is going to be Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles, Mutant Mayhem. So a lot of kids are going to go wild for that one. There will be pop- There will be popcorn and snacks available for purchase, and we are encouraging all participants to bring lawn chairs, blankets, whatever you would like to sit on, and it will take place inside on the curling club floor. And as with the other events, this event is completely free to attend. And that is all from us.
Police.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Our observance for this memorial, our, from City Hall, is part of the, of, 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 of First Grade Classroom.
Assistant City Manager.
Hello again, everybody. So, it's important when we have the opportunity to celebrate our staff, to celebrate our staff, first of all, professionals, significant events. So with that, on April 27th of this year, our DPW director, Jim, is in the, in the Capitol. I just wanted to take a minute and celebrate him. He is one of our colleagues. Be inspired, partner.
Congratulations. I'd like to know when you had the time to study.
I was thinking the same thing. I'm like, I know how hard he works. What did he, what degree?
Good luck. And then I just want to note, our next regular city council meeting is also delayed because of the Memorial Day holiday, so that will be Tuesday, May 27th.
That it?
Yes.
All right. Then I will, go over here. Councilmember Kelly.
I just want to congratulate Jim. Good job on that. And congratulations to, and thank you, Dean, and your team for another successful election. Thank you.
Polika.
Mayor, could you give me just?
Councilmember Johnson. Second, Councilmember Kelly's remarks. Congratulations, Jim. Our little boys all grown up. I'm so proud of you. And, yeah, again, thank you, Dean, as well. Very, very well-run election. I had very positive feedback from folks who had, like, day-of-voting experience, and they said it was just really smooth and really nice. Reminder for me, we do have a historical society here in Ferndale, the Ferndale Historical Society. The museum is located on Livernoy. You may have seen it, right next to Fire 1. The museum is open from 1:00 to 4:00 on Saturdays. I'll be there some Saturdays as the council liaison to the historical society. I want to remind residents that annual membership is only $15, a huge bargain to have access to the full archive of history of our wonderful city. And a lifetime membership is $150. And if you want a house plaque, if you are a recent home buyer here in Ferndale, or you've thought about it and haven't pulled the trigger on that, we do have house plaques. So, we will research when your home was built, which is when we, the building permit was originally pulled, and we will order a custom metal plaque for your house that can be installed to show that your home, when it was built, for Ferndale. So, encourage folks to stop by the museum, learn a little bit about Ferndale's history. It's, there's been a lot. You can see pictures of when Ferndale was literally a Dale of Ferns, and mostly horse-drawn carriages on dirt roads. So, really cool stuff. Highly encourage residents to, you know, take an interest, to get involved in, in that. Other than that, that's all I got, Mayor.
Now, back to Councilmember Polika.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Riley did mention the recycling that's coming up this weekend, one of my favorite events. There's also going to be paper shredding. So, you know, we just got through tax season. If you haven't shredded your paper, if you have stuff that needs to be shredded, the shredder will be there up until 2:00 p.m. I think you have to make sure that you bring it before 2:00 p.m. But, yeah, there are a lot of things that are covered. Household items, aerosol cans, foil, furniture even, paint, yep, cans of paint, electronics, CDs that you don't use anymore, even those plastic covers that they came in. Wow TV or Wow Cable just canceled all their cable, and all these people have cable boxes they can't use anymore. You can bring those. Styrofoam. One thing that I hate about our service is that we can't put styrofoam at the curb. So bring your styrofoam that you, you might not have thrown away yet. So, the other thing that I wanted to say is a huge thank you to the voters on Tuesday for supporting the millage. I want to thank you for having the trust that we will be responsible stewards of your taxes. I do not take that responsibility lightly, and I stress that this does, and I stress that this does not mean that we can breathe a sigh of relief. While this will allow us to continue to support our core services without an impact to the quality of those services, we know that we are only, we know that we are only safe for about four to five years, at which point the Headley rollbacks, which always outpace the increase in taxable values and the rate of inflation, it's going to start another period where our expenses are going to outpace our income. So we need to continue to be cautious in our spending, and if we can save over the next four to five years, because we'll have, probably the first several years will have a surplus, I, I stress that we do not waste that surplus, that we store it because we're going to need it in the next five to 10 years. And, you know, hopefully, over that period of time, we're not going to seriously impact our services, but it's going to be an interesting 10 years, but I appreciate the voters trusting us, and, so, thank you.
So, yes, first, congratulations, Jim, on your achievement. Still don't know how you did it, but I'm glad you did it. Congratulations. You're so busy and work so hard for the city, your team. I, too, want to thank the community for the positive outcome for the Headley reset. I'd like to thank City Council, one, for entertaining, the town halls, where residents were able to kind of speak their concerns. I'd like to thank the interim city manager at the time, because your input allowed us to formulate a plan once we heard the community concerns. Then I'd like to thank the, our new city manager for stepping right in and just taking, just jumping right in as far as what we needed to do, taking the initiative, presentations at council that were, I think, very clear and very understandable. I want to thank the communications department for, and the city, with the city manager and the, and the Assistant City Manager's support for the 30-second videos. I heard such good, good things about those. I think people understood them, and it was a, a quick learn without being too daunting, and I, I think those were very effective. I want to thank the city as a whole for your support in all of this. And lastly, I want to thank the community, because this couldn't have happened without you. 58% of you said yes to preserving our city's services, and I just want you to know how much I appreciate that. And as Councilmember Polika stated, we're not out of the woods, but we're, we're in a good place, and it's because of your trust in our leadership. So, thank you. It was mentioned that the Mayor State of the City is happening at Affirmations tomorrow at 7:00, but just before that, between 5:30 and 7:00, is our volunteer appreciation. So, anyone who served on boards, commissions, or volunteered in this community will be acknowledged and celebrated during that time, so I hope you can join us at Affirmations. And I just want to just point out something. At our last, well, first I'll state that there is a, a Dr. Nat Pernick, who is president and founder of pathologyoutlines.com. And what he does on his own time is that when there is a large voter, a, a large election where there's expected to be a greater numbers of voter turnout, he takes it upon himself and his own dollars to award municipalities that have the highest voter turnout. So, you're placed in, you're placed from first place to seventh place, and for the November election, I believe Ferndale placed fifth. That's correct, yes, fifth, where we were awarded $250 to provide to a recipient of a nonprofit or an organization that is near and dear to Ferndale. I'm happy to state, I'm happy to share that just this morning, Nat Pernick, and myself, and Sharon Chess, president of the Ferndale Community Concert Band, was a recipient of that check. So, thank you, Nat. Again, this is on his own time, it's what he does, and we're all for it. So Sharon Chess was very appreciative, and I just wanted to share that she does have that check in hand to continue to promote great music in the community for us to enjoy. And with that being said, unless council has any more additions, this meeting's adjourned at 8:03. Thank you.